Welcome to the historic Monroe County Courthouse. I'm Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. We have Penny Githens and Lee Jones with us today as well, who are also county commissioners. And I do want to note that Rita Barrow is here from Van Buren. She's a trustee. And if I'm missing anyone, let me know. I have my glasses on, but they're really for reading, sorry. All right. It is wonderful to see you all today and to have this celebration. And we are really excited to be continuing this fight with all of you. This is something that really started with a fax. Yes, a fax. It was 2017, but we got a fax during the commissioners' meeting from the city of Bloomington announcing annexation. A fax. Oh, then the wheels started spinning, right? Then we talked about what is it going to cost Monroe County government? What is the impact going to be on residents? Oh my gosh, have you seen the size of this property? Have you looked at this map? We said to one another over and over and over again. It was daunting, but the trouble really started with that fax. And I don't think we've gotten one since, by the way. So, one of the interesting conversations I had with Margaret Clements came fairly early on. And she is a tireless fighter. I love her because she will say... She will say, "What can we do about it?" And a lot of times people will say, "What are you gonna do about it?" But what can we do? What can we do? What can we do? And we learned the legal ins and outs. We learned about what remonstration petitions were. This crazy new language entered our everyday vernacular and haven't left us yet, although I'm looking forward to the day when I say remonstrance. That sounds familiar. I'd love that day. So, we got a better sense of those legal requirements. And what I said was something like, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we need to figure out who everyone is at all these addresses. And I think we need to let them know that they're being targeted for annexation, because I don't think people know. I don't think people know. And so then the list started. The Excel spreadsheets from Hades appeared on desktops and were torn through, sorted, fixed, filtered, sorted again, fixed, filtered, sorted again. And we ended up having this massive petition campaign, sort of the pre-remonstrance petition campaign, so that people could get knocks at the door and be told and be warned. You are being targeted for annexation. Here's what your legal remedy is going to be. And that's where the trouble started, but that's where the struggles were. And that's where our success was. And that's what brings us all here today. So from Monroe County, we started meeting. We started talking about the fiscal impact. We started talking about circuit breakers on property tax. We talked through all of that. We hired a consultant, didn't get the information we needed. We hired another. And we found out how far off the city was in its fiscal plan. And you all, we can do our work here in Monroe County, but we can't do anything without all of you. And every darn one of you stepped up big time. And we are so grateful for the time and the energy and the dedication you have provided and given to this very important movement. And I've been part of grassroots movements across the years, some successful, some not. I remember fighting I-69. That didn't work out, but this one's gonna be successful, I hope. I will tell you that I've never seen a grassroots movement like this in my 30 years in Monroe County. And thanks to all of you for all of that. Thank you. Thank you. Please give yourselves a hand. Thank you. So, fairgrounds, fire departments, driveways, doors, front porches, back porches, township offices, the lobby here at the courthouse. We've met people across this community. And we've seen that the question was, how do we protect ourselves? How do we protect our loved ones? How do we protect our neighbors who can't protect themselves? You all were so giving of your time and your heart and your energy. Cannot thank you enough for that. And you all made this happen. You all brought us to the success that we will hopefully enjoy very soon. Who knows? But we're gonna get an update on that. But it is, it crosses neighborhoods. It crosses political party. It crosses religious differences. It crosses economic status. It doesn't matter. We were all in this together. And people would say, there are people I've never met before who lived down the street from me, and now we're friends. This is great. This is what grassroots politicking looks like at its finest. And you all have played a significant role in that, and I cannot thank you enough. Next, I'm gonna call up Commissioner Penny Githens. Well, it's so good to look out and see friends here today. Some of you I've known for a long time, some I've met through this process, and the rest of you I hope to meet as we go forward. I want to thank everybody for stepping up. You've sacrificed. You've sacrificed your time, your money, your energy, your psychic well-being sometimes, right? And I know that you did that for the greater good. You attended meetings hosted by the Bloomington City Council to let them know of your opposition to annexation hearings. And I went back and watched a couple, watched those two meetings a few months ago. And some of you are very fiery, let me tell you. Your passion came through. Your commitment to what needed to happen came through. And so, again, thank you for that, because some of us waited a few hours to be heard on those evenings. You attended meetings that the county commissioners hosted to learn about the economic impact that this would have on you and your neighbors. You knocked doors and got people to sign petitions even before the annexation process was restarted. In the midst of a pandemic, think about, in a pandemic, you hosted gatherings in your driveways, on your porches, as Commissioner Thomas said, to encourage your neighbors to sign those remonstrances. You posted signs. You sent emails. You made phone calls to, again, get those neighbors out to make a difference. You signed and submitted your own remonstrances, which was no easy feat in a few cases, right? Many of you have provided funding to County Residents Against Annexation to make the lawsuits possible. Again, no small feat. And as Commissioner Thomas said, some of you made friends during this process, which further strengthens our community and your neighborhoods. So we're actually gathered here today to acknowledge and celebrate your individual sacrifices and to say thank you. Our community is better, much, much better, because of your involvement. So thank you. And now I'm gonna turn this over to Commissioner Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the rotunda of our historic courthouse, which for many is a symbol of our community. Communities are usually made up of many disparate people who don't always agree with each other. But so often, a shared cause is what brings people together. In this case, a fight against annexation. At a time when our country can seem so divided, experiencing a common cause can remind us about all the things that we actually agree on, which are often more important to our everyday lives than things we disagree on. I'm so proud of our community and of all of you. Under very difficult circumstances, a magnificent endeavor was carried out. But this is a community where that is, where it's not unusual to see things like this. We care about the quality of our lives and know how to fight for it. I know the annexation fight isn't over, but so far, it's been a very good fight. As some of you may know, I wasn't able to participate as closely as my colleagues because I was ill much of the time. But I always kept very close track of what was happening and was with you in my heart and cheering you on. Thank you so much for all you have done.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming today. It really is humbling to see all of the good community members who have showed up here to stay updated with this important cause. And to thank the commissioners and the county employees who wholeheartedly administered this monstrous action. I mean, it was tremendous. The auditor who cannot be here today, Catherine Smith, she sends her love to each and every one of you. She is sorry that she cannot be here. But her office, despite people coming down with COVID, having lost a person who was battling cancer throughout the remonstration period, and all of us have had difficulties, but we united wholeheartedly as a community because the community, the people, said no. They did not want to be annexed. And so these leaders, the assessor, the auditor, the legal department, the commissioners, they all came together to help us with what was a very complicated process. Rita Barrow is sitting there, and we, I remember when we got the remonstration instructions, and it was like right before remonstration began. And I said, "How is it, Rita?" And she said, "Not good." You know, because the rules were so, so intricate that there were so many ways that we could foul up a signature, that we were just trying to get it done and to achieve the 65%. And do you know what? No matter what they say, across this community, we had, 70%, at least, of the people who said no. They did not want to be annexed. Technically, because six in seven got out of it before the ordinance was passed. You know, exactly 68% in annexation areas 1A, 1B, 1C, 2, 3, 4, and 5. 68% signed, and they were acknowledged by the auditor that they did not want to be annexed. Now, I'd like to know why. In a city that continues to hold listening sessions and claims they want to listen to people, why can't they hear 68% of the people do not want to be annexed? It's a supermajority of people who do not want to be annexed. And you know why I don't think the people want to be annexed? It's not because they hate the city. It's not because they don't want to be part of something bigger than themselves. They just don't like what's going on around here, number one. And number two, the policy was a bad policy. Everybody in this room knows that it wasn't a professional policy. They just tried to get it done during the middle of the night, during a pandemic, when everybody, during the time of the year with the most holidays, where it was the coldest and most difficult for the people to show up. You know? So... (Applause) So, the people knew, the people sitting in this room know that it's a bad policy. That it was too much all at once, that it would be professionally difficult or impossible for the city to administer the new population that it intended to annex, that it was impractical, and it was just not principled. Too many of our elderly in our community would have been harmed. And for all the claims about the need for affordable housing, why on earth would you force people in the twilight of their lives out of the homes that they currently can afford? So, it was a bad policy. And as a result, more than 68%, you know, because annexation area seven, I think you had 92%, 98%? I don't know. Annexation, how many?
92.
92. And annexation area six had like 98%. So, it was technically, officially, 68% of the people in 1A through 5, against whom the ordinances were passed, said no. They said no. They signed no. They signed no before notary. They signed no before the auditor. They said no. But they can't hear it. I don't know why they can't hear it. Well, I promised you I'd give you an update on the law today and where it stands. We've just, I know you're keeping up on Facebook and on Nextdoor and all of that. Any minute, any minute, the judge is going to decide on the constitutionality of, actually, not that. The judge and I, Kirk, will decide whether or not the waiver cases against annexation areas 1C, 2, 3, 4, and 5 must be dismissed because they are identical to the cases against 1A and 1B. And the city dismissed those in order to go forward with the annexation trial. So it's a request for summary judgment. Any minute, we're gonna get a decision on that. And we haven't even begun to talk about the constitutionality of the waiver case yet. That will be years in the making for annexation areas 1C, 2, 3, 4, and 5 that achieved over 65% of the signatures in their areas. So in annexation areas 1A and 1B, we just got through a five-day bench trial. We've already won throughout this process the right to appeal, which is not an automatic thing. We have already earned that on the COVID issue, if you know what I'm talking about. And we expect that decision to come down sometime in August. But all together, we have accomplished a lot. We have, I think this is the largest grassroots movement that the community has ever seen. And there's so many more things that we've accomplished that I've spelled out here, but I've kind of gone ad lib. And I think I'm over my three minutes, and I don't want to keep you here. So, we're gonna start with the celebration of you people, which is why we're here. And really, I just, the people who are here, you really helped your neighbors. You elevated your neighbors. You elevated the principled opposition to a bad policy. And I just admire you all so much. You really got out there and got it done. So, thank you. Now, I have a lot of certificates here, but you know, throughout this process, we've lost some important people. Some important people who really made the difference. For example, in annexation area 1C, Benny Knight. I think he got almost so many of those signatures, and he, of course, then cannot be with us. In annexation area seven, Paul Green, who appears frequently, appeared frequently before the plan commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals to represent the neighbors that he organized. He cannot be here. He's missed. We miss him. And then we also have Janelle Benedict, who is not able to be here, but her spouse is able to be here, Ruth Harpool. And we have a certificate for you to take and to honor her. And we just really appreciate all of the work that... Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. And I know that... Yeah. Yeah, thank you. And I know because we have in our midst here one of the best dance instructors ever. And she has to get to teach dancing at Arthur Murray tonight. So I'd like to honor from area 1B Barbara Lineinger. She's wonderful. Thank you so much, Barbara. Thank you. Oh, I forgot to hand him over here. Sorry. Sorry. I figured my motor skills out here. And I don't know if Ralph Axum was able to make it tonight. So we'll get his signature. There will be a number of names that I call that I did not hear from the people. So I'd rather be inclusive than exclusive. So bear with us. Andrew Briggs, is he able to be here? Rachel Combs. Yes. And well, because there's so many of these, we may want to applaud at the end, because you guys, we're not getting any younger, so... And this is for Donald Creek. I know he's here. And Nathan Peach, if Nathan Peach is here, wonderful. And Deborah Reed. We're gonna continue to go through these like this. And I think Cheryl Sisko, did you make it? I know she intended to. Is that two? No. She did not make it. So, okay. Did Robert Shaw make it? No. And James Spice, is he here? John Stinson? Listen to all these beautiful names. Thomas Williams? Linda, oh, there he is. Okay, great. Thank you for coming tonight. Linda Wilber? Okay, and then I have a list here of people who could not attend. So if it turns out that you're here by the end, that you did not get a certificate, come up to see us, because I probably have it in my stash, because we're gonna get these to everybody who contributed. And we're gonna go now to annexation area 1B. Is Patricia Clarbot here? No. Tracy Klarnar? James Daly? No. Tina Edwards? Okay. Wonderful. James Eck Jr., were you able to make it? Rick Ferguson, I know he's here. He's also on our Board of Advisors for County Residents Against Annexation. Joseph Sean Faray? Stephanie Faray? Ginger Fouts, I know Ginger is here. And Rhonda Gray is here. And Joanna Han, are you able to be here today? No? Okay. Jimmy, Jimmy Dean is here. No, Jimmy Dean Johnson is here. And also for Mary Ann Johnson, he can take this to his lovely wife. Yeah. Rex Kurtz is here. I know that. And Karen LaSella, are you here? I don't see you. Thomas McGee, I saw you earlier. Yes. And Thomas Osborne? Megan Parmenter was not able to make it. Richard Peach, I think I saw him. And also for your wife, Mary Beth, is she there? Yes. And Lee Rhine, I saw you earlier. Thank you for coming. And Lucille Fernsturgis? Fern? Great. And Darlene Talbot? Did Darlene make it? Is Lisa still here? No? Oh, good. Well, when you come up, you can take Darlene's, to her. Amy Zainer. And then these are other people who could not attend. And we're gonna go now to 1C. I don't think many of these people were able to make it. Rochelle Parrish, Jennifer Scott, Nakia Johnson, and I know Jill Snyder wasn't able to make it. And right now, we're in annexation area two, so we're moving along. Eric and Sonia Ast? Ast? Are, okay. Martina Sparnas? Mary Ann Born and Bill Born? Mary Dyer, she's with Cheryl Sisko. That's Cheryl's mother. Steve Dyer is here. I know that. Thank you, Steve, for all of your counsel and your advice. Mandy Eaton? George Bart Farrell? Chris Gall? He wasn't able. Mark Gardner, are you here today? Oh, yes. Good. It's good to see you again. And Catherine Gray? Okay. Gail Hart, was she able to make it? No. Kathleen Smokey Hertz? There she is. Kurt Kinnaman? David and Donna Mars are here. There they are. Linda McCoy, are you here today? No, she wasn't. Can you take this to Linda, Donna? That would be great. Thank you. And Catherine McManus? Thank you. This is for Catherine. Is Gina Myers here? No. Ed Oxner? Ted Oxner? He's not... Oh, good, you're here. I didn't see you. And here's one for Soiley. Okay. And Jeff Uli? Yes. Paula Patton? Mary Ann Pellic? She's not here. I'm gonna give it to the Bunker and Robertson. Karen Pitkin? John Prehoda? Oh, great, it's good to see you. Whoa, are you okay? And RH Ryder? And I don't think Ron Remack is here. Diane and Mark Riggins, are you here? Okay. I know there are a lot of grandkids coming. Thanks for all that you do. And Steve Schuster is here. I know that. I saw him sitting in the back. Leslie Scott? Dwight Stauffer? Yeah. And Roger, Roger the Man? And I saw Linda Summit, too. Wonderful. This is for Linda Summit. Is Kevin Tylee here? Yes. We may have a typo on your name. We can fix it, Kevin. I promise. Wayne Winston? Now, if Ted would be so kind, or I have here the certificates for other people in Heritage Woods Road who couldn't be with us tonight, and also in Sterling Woods. If Kevin, if you wouldn't mind giving this to the other people in Sterling Woods, that would be great. Thank you. Okay. So that's annexation area two. We're an efficient county. Yeah. Okay. Okay. And then we did 1B. Okay, so now we're gonna go to 1C. Oh, we already did 1C. We did this one. Okay. Oh. Now, this is wonderful. We had wonderful people throughout the city who helped us as well. And we really can't thank you enough for all of the work that you did to unite with your county colleagues, to help uplift the voices of the many, because it's amazing how invisible the few can make the many seem. And you all have been really tremendous. So Peter Dorfman, thank you. Yeah. Betty Rose Nagel? And of course, without Sandy Saban, none of this would have happened. She's just been tremendous all throughout. The driveways, the signage, 1010 South Walnut, all along. Being a great friend, a great friend. No, 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 no. Alan Siffen is not here. Gene Simonian. Oh, that's just wonderful. And even though he doesn't live in this city, he's a wonderful, remarkable young man. And he's at IU, so kind of in the city, but he's a county boy, man. Colby Wicker, and Rita is going to accept that for him. Okay. And now we're in annexation area three. Janice Chastain? And Liza Fitzgerald? Yes. Oh, sorry. Yes. Yes. And could you take Darlene Stewart's? And what about Darlene Talbot? Do you know her? Okay. We'll save hers for later. Oh, and Lisa, would you take Jody's as well? Yes, because even...
(Laughter) This is how she gets things done. You know that, right?
Thank you. Thank you. And then, of course, we're in annexation area four. And I'll never forget the day I met Susan Brackney. She's the one who's made all these signs and gave us kind of a cute and lovable fight. and gave us kind of a cute and lovable fight. Yeah, we're fighting, we're fighting, but with the lettuce and the cute bee, it doesn't feel so bad. You know, it's so cute, it puts a smile on your face even though you're mad as hell. Thanks to Susan. Thank you, thank you. And Mark Furnish is here. He's a father of two twin boys just recently. Congratulations, Mark. And we have a certificate for Vivian as well. Yeah, busy making more county residents. But now they've got to grow them upright. And Floyd Kent Lawson, who's been just such a great friend and wonderful person. Mark said that he was knocking on doors in annexation area 5, and nobody would answer, but then he went out with Kent, and every door opened up, and... That was just great. Oh, and I see Pam Ferris, so this is annexation area 6. Pam and Scott Ferris helped lead the way in early remonstration efforts to have us do the pre-remonstration petition to try to convince the city that this would be a waste of energy, money, and would be divisive. And the city just did not listen then either. Art Omac said he could not attend earlier this evening. And then we have annexation area 7. They also showed us how to get it done. They did the calculations where, you know, the fewer than three persons per acre. And they just were great leaders and showed us all how to be better residents and how to lift up the voices of the many. So Dana and Jim Burton, we really appreciate all the work that you've done. And Cheryl and David Lehman, thank you for your hard work. Now, can somebody in annexation area 7 get the certificate to Gail Trout? Okay. Well, this brings me to the close because we're going to honor Nat Hill. And really... Well, you've done a lot around here lately. You've done a lot around here lately. And every time we come into this courthouse, we're aware that we're seeing the generations of the Hill family that have influenced our community, that have given us heart, that we honor the heritage that you and your father and your uncles and aunts and your relatives and the Ferris relatives and the Reed relatives and the old Bloomington relatives of people who gave us the heart that we love so much about Monroe County. And that's why it's important to continue this effort.
I never thought I'd get anything done in my life because all I heard about was how great my dad was and how great my son is. And I'm just grateful I finally got a certificate.
So that's, is there anybody in the room who is here that did not receive a certificate that I may have misfiled in the cannot attend category?
Well, I would like to wrap up today by thanking everyone for being here. And I would like to, which, thanks. I would like to take a moment to thank Margaret Clemens because we wouldn't be here without her. And we got her a little bubbly just because she's going to need to crack that open at some point, too. But you are amazing. She has been a tireless leader, and this is how she does it. Would you take that certificate over there, please? I mean, it sounds so simple, but then next thing you know, you've got people showing up at your driveway, and you've got a card table and 10 people you've never met before having a talk at the bottom of your driveway. You're amazing. You get people together in a way that nobody else I've ever seen. And I also want to take a moment to thank everyone who's been involved with County Residents Against Annexation, your work on that board, people who have raised money. We still need to pay some legal bills. I do, speaking of bills, I do want to thank our attorneys. And I don't know if you want to do that, but... Oh, you do, okay. Okay, great. Yeah, so...
Okay, so the next step that we're going to do is we're going to probably have a meeting. We're going to call people together and see if it turns out that the decision comes out not in our favor, for 1A and 1B, do we want to appeal? And that will be a serious discussion, and we can talk about money at that time. But this is about you. Today is about you. It's not, you know, we are lucky that our attorneys are local, and every dime we spend on them stays in our community. You're not like the Indianapolis Blowheart. Not like that. The money stays in our community, and we feel good about that. And we have an excellent county attorney, too, who is helping out on the, not helping, he's in the waiver case representing the auditor who's being sued. Jeff Cockrell, the name of our attorney? Okay, so at Bungar and Robertson, which is a 75-year-old company, a legacy business in Bloomington, Indiana. We have Bill Beggs, who is a partner, Ryan Heap, Mary Ann Pellic, who lives on East Harrington Woods Road and is a remonstrator. I think Bill Beggs is technically a remonstrator as well. And a nice young man who's getting his start in the legal profession by the name of Jace Paris. And he's with Bungar and Robertson. Here, in our exceptional county attorney's office, Jeff Cockrell has been representing the auditor. And I'm sure that he gets backup from the other attorneys.
Yeah, absolutely. Molly Turner King. And we do have Dave Schilling, who's the head attorney, so... But Jeff Cockrell has been amazing. He's really helped us through a lot of this and explained a lot of things that are very complicated, too, so that I could understand them, which is, that's a task. So I also want to invite you, as you mingle and depart today, we have some Monroe County glassware and water bottles. You are welcome to take with you. I will note that the glassware is not dishwasher safe. But it's beautiful glassware. So please enjoy, and it's just a token of our appreciation from the Monroe County Board of Commissioners to all of you, to each and every one of you, for everything you've done. Thank you all.